Great, welcome everybody to the October 28th, 2021, meeting of the Tompkins County Council of Governments. And I guess first I'll ask if there are any additions to the agenda that anyone wants to put forward?
Mark JR Claiborne is here and he asked for a few minutes on the agenda today.
Okay, that's, that's great. Okay, great, we'll add on JR. Okay, with that, I will offer the, the minutes of August 26th for approval. Does anyone have any feedback on the, on the minutes?
I do. I believe Paul Fenn's name is F E E and not F I N N. He's mentioned with respect to community choice aggregation.
That's correct.
I'll make that correction. Thanks, Joel.
With that correction made, I'd be happy to move the ministry approved.
Great, okay, take that as a second. So are there any further comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approval as amended, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Great, thank you. The minutes are of August 26th are approved. And so now, do we have a report from Lisa, county administrator?
Thanks, Mark.
Sure.
I have a few brief updates. First to notify folks that last, late last week, the county released an RFP request for proposals for consultants for, to help administer the county's recovery grant program. And this is the up to about six and a half million dollars that the county is putting to maximize community recovery to, to help benefit county residents. So we're looking for a consultant to help administer that program. The RFP is out and available now on the county finance webpage and question and answer period is, is happening now and questions are due by November 15th and the proposals are due by November 22nd. So we're, we're glad to see that moving along. In the COVID realm, we have seven active hospitalizations and 110 total active cases. Been in general seeing a plateau or decline in cases over the past month. And we are, the health department is currently preparing for the vaccinations for five to 11 year olds. We have not received approvals to do that yet, but are gearing up for, for when that becomes available. And currently, all three COVID-19 vaccines are available for, for boosters. And they are available to people who are eligible at participating pharmacies or through, you know, contacting your primary care physician. So the health department is, is not going to be continuing to administer booster doses. They will be pushed through local pharmacies as the health department gears up to for the vaccination of the five to 11 year old population. So that's that. And we are completing the process of our, our search and interview process for our airport director. You know, we're in the, the final stages of that. I think that's, that's all of our recent updates, but I'm happy to field any questions that anyone might have.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Any questions for Lisa? I'm not seeing any Lisa, I guess not, so. All right, moving on. We now will, we have a presentation from Katie Halas, I believe, on the Tompkins Food Future Policy Council. So welcome, Katie. Thanks for joining us and I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Hey, thanks, Mark. Nice to see you. Thank you all so much for having me on this beautiful day. I have a couple of slides prepared for you. Also bear with me one moment while I just pull that up. I'm assuming I'll be able to share my screen. Well, able to see the, the Tompkins County Community Food System Plan update.
Yes.
And thanks again for having me. I believe it was close to a year ago that I spoke with you all about sort of the first phase of the food system plan. And we're now quite a bit further along, sort of launching into the development of the plan itself. We've spent a lot of time over the last 18 months or so, listening, learning, pulling together existing data about our local food system. And so we're excited about what we've learned and we've been starting to share that more broadly with, with the community and stakeholders. I'll, I'll say this again, but our materials, we have some, I think, pretty accessible and digestible executive summaries available that, which are found on our website and I'll provide you all with the link and, and send that along as well. So thanks again for this opportunity to update you all, just as a refresher for folks who, this is your first time hearing about this project. The project was dubbed Tompkins Food Future and it's a project of the Food Policy Council of Tompkins County, which is just a small citizen volunteer group working to strengthen the local food system. It's in partnership with Cooperative Extension, sort of fiscally housed there. And we're funded by the Tompkins County Legislature as well as the Community Foundation of Tompkins County. The Food Policy Council has been around for a number of years. The last year and a half is the first time it's been staffed. Oops, a little too fast there. So like air, like water, like soil, food is necessary for us to survive. And a food system plan can really provide a common vision, collective energy to strengthen our local farm and food economy, to really take proactive steps to mitigate climate change and to ensure an equitable food system for all of our residents. So making sure that everyone has access to nutritious foods to improve their, their health and their diet. Because food occupies such a significant place in our lives and in our communities, we're, we're feeling like this is a more vital effort than ever, looking for ways to, you know, fill some of the gaps, address inequities, remove barriers, sort of support those who are most vulnerable in our community. And it's, so it's a vital component to public health, safety, welfare of residents. It takes up a huge portion of our urban and our rural landscapes and it intersects with so many different facets of our community. Everything from economic development to transportation, to our environment and our energy needs, water quality. I mentioned equity, where our neighborhoods are laid out and so much more. So with food system improvement being so inexplicably linked to these tenets of community wellbeing and as governments look to uphold and improve residents' health, safety and wellbeing, we really feel more than ever that food must be given its due. The vision of the Food Policy Council is a food system that is sustainable, equitable, healthy and affordable for all members of our community. And I won't go into the details you see there below, but those are some of the specific ways that we kind of envision that, bringing, bringing that vision to life. Just a brief note about our process to date, we've really focused on bringing community input into the process and identifying key challenges, gaps, vulnerabilities in our food system and also asking people, what, what is, what are the assets that we have to build on? And there are a lot of those. I don't have to tell you all that. A lot to be proud of in Tompkins County. We really took pains to capture people's stories, their struggles, their concerns and their hopes in, in this planning process. And for the next phase of development, we're going to be articulating back and sort of sharing what we heard, recommendations for future actions and policies based on community engagement and input. And lastly, after the plan is developed and released, sort of co-created with community input, we'll be looking towards implementation to move us towards that vision. Some moment about next steps, we're continuing to work on the food system plan. So we've, we've been working on what's called the, the food system baseline assessment. So it's essentially been kind of a SWOT analysis of the local food system, really trying to understand the current landscape. So we are now taking that out to the community, sharing that as widely and broadly as we possibly can and starting to gather ideas for the, the plan itself, the focus of the plan and the content. Drafting the goals, going back to the community in a really, what we're hoping will be a very iterative process. And so this community engagement piece is the most important task going forward as far as we see it. We've consistently reached out to stakeholders and community members and we're trying to continually improve upon that process so that it is inclusive. And that often means relying on community partners to help us advance the goals of this effort and to encourage others to weigh in and share their ideas and their priorities. And we're aiming towards a draft plan in the spring and hopefully being able to deliver that close to a final form in the, the late spring to the legislature. And I, I put it that way only because it feels like it's, this is work that could almost never be done. You know, we could study the food system for five years and we could do community engagement for another five years and there's just, there's a lot there. But obviously, we don't want to do that. So some of the ways that we've engaged the community, we've obviously been doing this process throughout COVID and so we've had to pivot a bit. But we've been proud of the engagement thus far from folks who are volunteering to work more closely on the process. The two public meetings that we were able to have, one in February of 2020, the other just at the end of last month where we had close to 100 people turn out to listen to our, some of our findings that I'm going to share with you momentarily here. We've had over a thousand people respond to surveys that we've put out and we've had really in-depth conversations and conducted interviews with well over 100 people working in the different sectors of the food system. So just to say a brief note about what we covered, sort of to share our scope for this baseline assessment, which we do put together executive summaries on, and that those can be found at TompkinsFoodFuture.org/food-system-plan, that link right there. So for each sex or sector of the food system that we've identified, soil to soil, every, everything that happens with food from, you know, farm to the point of human consumption and beyond, we're looking at. And the data that we used, a lot of it is from our primary interviews and surveys that we did with, with local community members to sort of, you know, ground truth and gut check a lot of the data that came through the national sources like the Ag Census, the US Census, other USDA databases, Feeding America, which is a, a national nonprofit that monitors and tracks and does analysis of food security issues and various other local studies that are related. Um, so I'm just going to dive into some of the, the, if you will, of the findings, starting with production. I won't read these verbatim, but this is just a snapshot of our agricultural landscape in the community. Like I said, the data is primarily from the Ag Census, which of course is imperfect, but it's what we have. And so we wanted to try to pull out some of the most, I think, compelling statistics. And yeah, like I said, we aim to highlight the characteristics of our system here. You all probably already know this, that we have a large number of farms in Tompkins County that, that is declining, but is relatively large to our size. Over a third of that land is rented. The vast majority is used for growing animal feed. Most farms are small and they're selling less than 40 grand annually. Less than 10% are organic, less than 20% are selling direct to consumer. And sort of economic viability of farming is, is, is questionable with over half of farms reporting net losses. In terms of the people farming, it's a, it's a very male dominated profession. Most people who are farming and owning land are white and the average age of farmers is over 55. So a lot of folks kind of on the cusp of retirement, thinking about next steps and that, that's an important piece that I'll talk more about later. Some of the challenges when we connected with farmers, we interviewed over 30 farmers working in, across different areas of production. The labor was one of the biggest challenges people faced with labor costs being high, having a limited labor pool locally and a shortage of farmers for the next generation. That sort of transition piece is, is huge in our community. Financial struggle is the norm for our producers and off-farm income is often needed to stay afloat with regulations impeding profitability. Access to retailers, distributors, processors and business support is lacking in a major challenge. Access to land is very difficult due to inequities and systemic racism as well as high land prices and development pressure. Almost everyone we talked to spoke about the challenges that climate change has increasingly brought to their operations with more, more and more time and resources and finances needed to address these impacts, which are more and more significant. And these issues are causing, these issues, the hurdles are even higher for folks who are trying to get into farming, so new and beginning farmers. Infrastructure speaks to sort of all of the steps from farm to, to retail, to plate, that food needs to go through. And this is honestly an area, you'll see a lot of question marks here where a lot of the businesses and entities that operate, you know, are, are multinationals, they are not locally based. And so there's a lot we don't know. A lot of that information is proprietary. We don't know about where they're sourcing. We don't have a way of measuring how much of our food dollars are leaving Tompkins County, which are all things we're really interested in. Some of the, some of the challenges that we heard about in this sector include the fact that it is so controlled by businesses outside of our community and upwards of 90% of the food is coming from outside of Tompkins County. Supplying seasonal items from local farms at wholesale levels is difficult. Requires a lot of flexibility, which local farmers don't always have, and it's hard to compete with larger diversified distributors. Farmers struggle to scale up operations. Value-added processing requires access to capital, facilities, technical expertise, understanding the regulatory environment and so on. That support is, is much needed. A lot of challenges with access to USDA-approved slaughterhouses and hiring workers is an ongoing challenge, we heard, not just here, but nationally. The food environment, you could also call this the retail sector, but the food environment really speaks to the mix of businesses and institutions where people eat and where people acquire and obtain food. So it's sort of that mix in any community, which has a really big influence on people's health and wellbeing and on our local economy. So again, just a snapshot here, some of the challenges that we heard about in our conversations with folks working in this sector. Food service workers feel undervalued. There's a lack of visibility and support. Hiring and retention are really big challenges for food retailers. Most don't pay a living wage and so that, that piece is difficult as well. The corporate decision-making for the larger stores restricts local retailers' ability to buy local products, even if the demand is there. And institutional food service limitations make it hard to incorporate local seasonal foods. On the flip side of that, local farmers lack the incentives to sell to institutional buyers who really need those low prices. And yeah, so I'll, I'll move to the next here. Food access and security. Unsurprisingly, this was a major area of focus, interest and concern within the work. Like I said, we kicked off the process less than a month into COVID and we quickly realized that these issues were more, more crucial than ever and that we need to build resilience in our local food system now, ahead of future shocks to our local food system so that all community members are food secure. So we live in a community with a rich, with a rich reputation around food and many of us, you know, experience that abundance and also many people cannot and don't have access. And that's largely why we're here today. Notably, about one in nine residents are food insecure, more so for children, about one in eight. And you, you can note that food is more expensive here than it is throughout the rest of the country. We have hotspots of food insecurity in Tompkins County and we also are facing disruptions to our food system that will create access, access issues for everybody with changing climate. So I'll just briefly touch on some of the challenges. There are a lot here and there's a lot to discuss, but I know we're just kind of doing a summary today. Affordability, awareness of services and resources. This one was pretty interesting to us because we do have an amazing public and nonprofit sector working on these issues and yet both from the provider side and also from sort of the client side, folks who are utilizing these services. There's the sense and the reality that there's so much food, there's so many resources and there's still so much need. There's so many people who are not aware of, unable to access, having difficulty jumping through the hoops of the paperwork, things like that to actually receive support. Limited access to the kinds of food that people want to eat, so nutritious, fresh, culturally appropriate, desirable food, preferable food at all the different places in the food environment. So not just stores, but also schools and hospitals and food pantries, wherever people are preparing their food. A real spectrum of transportation-related issues that disrupt food access and security. Sort of the umbrella over all of this is systemic problems and root causes such as racism, classism, income and wealth inequality, disabilities, housing and transportation insecurity. Sort of these disparities that, you know, we can't really address food insecurity in a vacuum. One thing that we found in our, in our research, especially as we started to like disaggregate the, a lot of the demographic data and a lot of the data we have about eligibility and participation in programs is that there are racial disparities there as well, which didn't really come as a surprise, but are really important to note. So higher levels of food insecurity among Black residents in particular, which is layered upon, of course, lower income rates and highest rates of poverty in the county. The emergency feeding programs are evolving. Even folks who run food pantries said things to us like, we wish we didn't have to exist. We want people to have the dignity of going to a store and purchasing the food that they want for themselves and their families. So kind of starting to, you know, talk about the dissatisfaction that, that people feel with that model of, of charity. While it's very important to address the real need, how can we really shift things to a better system overall? And as I mentioned, the, the climate uncertainty. Just going to touch on this one briefly, consumption, the types of food that we, that we like to eat, that we do eat, that we can access. This is very closely related to, to the last, but you know, the connections between diet and health are, are very clear. We here in Tompkins County are not free of the obesity epidemic and there's a lot of work to be done there in terms of supporting consumers to make decisions that have positive impacts on, on health, which then impacts public health. So this is just an area, you know, we all make decisions about food all day, at least three times a day. So it's, it's just a, it's really interesting area for us to explore because it's so personal in that way. And then it's also has such wide-ranging impacts. So I'll just, I'll kind of leave it at that. And lastly, the, the last sector that we covered was food waste and recovery. So this is an aspect of our local food system where, like many of the others, we have a lot to be proud of. And we have many options for reducing food waste and rescuing food. And there's also lots of work to be done. So as you can see, millions of pounds are diverted from the land, millions of pounds of food are diverted from the landfill through, you know, businesses like Kegu Compost and the Residential Food Scrap Collection Program. Friendship Donations Network is a wonderful organization, many of you are probably familiar with, that rescues food. But we can't escape the fact that food is the single largest component of solid waste in landfills. It's a significant contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, particularly in the form of methane. And I think we can all kind of agree that it's a, it's a misuse of really valuable resources, given the, the need among food insecure community members. Some of the challenges that we heard about are, are noted here, so I won't spend too much time. But I do, I invite you all to look more closely at the executive summaries, which go into these in a bit more depth and also highlight the priorities that were identified. So sort of a sneak peek at what we, what we hope to, what we think will be included in the food system plan itself. So, you know, earlier I, I mentioned a little bit about our, our vision and I mentioned that our, our most important step going forward is community engagement. Sharing this information, these insights, these stories, these concerns with, with the community, gathering their ideas for what should be included in the food system plan and really bringing that to life. And so we've, from all of these conversations that we've had, we've, we've come up with three preliminary directions for our food system, which are to build resilience, cultivate equity and economic opportunity and to promote human and ecosystem health. So those are kind of our working overarching goals. And I wanted to just ask you all today, you know, to, to help us and to help me think through how, how TCOG could help support this goal, support this work. We are doing presentations for community groups and workshops throughout the county. And we're looking forward to partnering with more and more folks. Additionally, the food system plan will include public policy recommendations. And so we're interested in learning from you about how we can best work with TCOG and other similar groups to, to engage. So I, I put that to you as, as a request and very much appreciate your, your thinking on this. And, and lastly, before I sort of open it, open it back up, I just wondered if, you know, in hearing, hearing a little bit about this project, if, if anything comes to mind in terms of what you would want to see in a local food system plan, what would you want to create, build, prioritize, support, improve? If you, if you have anything that you're willing to share, to just put that into the chat and I'll make sure to grab it for our local food system. As we move towards implementation, these are some of our ideas for the next year of work, which will be hopefully sort of solidifying in the, in the coming months. And lastly, I'll just leave a little bit of information here for you all. Again, I, I'll just say directly, for any folks who'd be willing to sort of host us, whether we, you know, do an in-person event or something on Zoom with, with your community constituents, we, we would be really glad to, to work with you on that. So please do let me know if you'd be willing. You can email me or just even let me know today because really this, this food system plan is, should be for and by our community. Executive summaries linked here and more information in general, just at TompkinsFoodFuture.org. Again, thanks so much for, for having me here today and I'd love to hear your questions. Um, again, thanks so much for, for having me here today and I'd love to hear your questions, your thoughts, your feedback. So um, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Katie. Um, great. So I'll, I'll open it up for any questions or comments that, that people have for Katie. Rod?
Uh, just more question. I'm assuming that we can get a copy of this presentation, so we might share it with our board members.
Absolutely. I am, what, what is the best sort of conduit to send you all materials? Sure. Is there one person that I could share it with who could blast it out to the whole group?
Yeah. So if you share it with um Katrina or
Okay.
or either Joe or Rod or myself, we'll send it to Katrina, but Katrina's the linchpin.
Yeah, uh Rod, I will send a copy of the presentation as well as I can send kind of a packet of um the executive summaries and the challenges. Um, so it's a pretty bite sized, digestible piece that folks can kind of just familiarize themselves with it.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I, I could see at some future community event that the town, I'm with the town of Ithaca, host.
Yes.
We would invite you in. Uh, so anyway, I'll be thinking about.
That would be terrific. Yeah, great. Thanks, Rod. Um, I'll follow up.
Was it, wasn't this attached to the agenda for this meeting? Or was I looking at a synopsis?
Uh, I think that, yeah, so.
It was a. Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just was saying that it was, it is attached to the agenda. And I did read most of it. Good. Yeah, I, that's great. So uh, yeah, I'll, I'll kind of resend things around and then you can just make sure everyone has everything and I'm, yeah, great.
Great. Anyone else uh questions or comments for Katie? Don?
Uh, I, I think this is a great idea, but how do you balance it with the fact that we're trying to cover every square inch of Tompkins County with solar panels? Uh, I be uh, I looked at your list of supporters and the same people that support local agriculture, support covering it with solar panels. So I don't know how that's gonna work.
Yeah, I admit I don't know how it's going to work either, and that's something that has definitely come up and it's a real tension and um. You know, the, I think that based on my experience doing this work and doing other planning work and um, you know, community work is that we really have to have the conversations. We really have to take the time to listen to each other and um yeah, have the hard conversations. I don't have an answer and it's, it's an issue that um I know cooperative, cooperative extension has been working to pull together some, some forums around and um, you know, I don't think these, I don't think anything is getting resolved or that the pressures aren't going away. And so it tells me that more, more attention is needed to it.
Well, to that point, uh, one of the slides showed how, what percentage of the, of land is being used for for animal feed and it's a very high proportion, like eighty percent.
Ninety-four percent.
Yeah. So that's part of the answer to the question. You could probably cover most of the land with solar panels and you would have fewer animals being supported, but I'm still up on your land to support.
Chicken and cheese is going up then.
Well, it would be nice if they did because a farmer sure could use a break.
The other, the other thing we could do is pile dirt on the solar panels and plant tomatoes, but.
Yeah, we can.
I don't think, I don't think uh local agriculture and solar panels go together. I just, I don't.
Hi, this is Joe from Ithaca. I'd like to jump in a slightly different question, um which I've been asking around and don't really know. I, I hear over and over again that minorities are having trouble breaking into the farming business and, and moving out into the more rural parts of the community. And as a town board member, what can we do to our zoning to ease that issue?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think um, you know, the issue of land access is something that folks are working on locally and obviously beyond. Um, you know, trying to find different interventions and different solutions. And as, as our work moves into this uh planned development uh phase, I think we have a lot of great models to look towards. And one thing that's really exciting to me about the next phase of this work is to really do this learning from other communities to explore sort of the creative tools that they've used. And so off the top, I'm not familiar with any um actual zoning or um land use policies that specifically sort of um grease those wheels. And I'm really glad that you mentioned it because um I think it's, you know, it's a, it's a problem that needs uh, you know, needs solutions from lots of different angles. The, the work being done, I don't know if people are familiar with the Learning Farm, but Kristin Nunez is the director of that project. She's based in Enfield. She has a project called Quarter Acre for the People where she's working to find landowners who are willing to link up with uh families who have been, individuals and families who have been historically sort of kept off of land and um urbanized and are interested in building um, you know, opportunities for themselves to grow their own food, whether just for their families or beyond. Um, and so she's really trying to build those connections between folks who have land and are willing to let others use it. Uh, I think, you know, thinking of it from the angle of um, you know, how, how can land use policy and how can zoning support it is a really good one and I'm gonna make a note of that.
Thank you.
And these are exactly the kinds of things that is, you know, really helpful for me to hear about from all of you and, and thinking about like what is, what is everyone's role in this, in this work?
Go ahead, Joel.
In Dambie, we're in the midst of a, of a major rezoning and, and we've engaged the agricultural community in a discussion about what uh can we do to support agriculture in the, in this context? And what came out of that was a, was a request that we incorporate something in that would make it easier to locate processing facilities within the town. Um, so that, so that growers can collaborate in processing uh in doing value added um activities. And that has, we, we've, we've, we've added a provision that, 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 that will make it easier to um to locate such small scale processing facilities as, as an effort to address that request.
That's exciting. That is, um, I don't know if it necessarily came through in my presentation, but um that is a huge bottleneck um in our local food system and something that frankly, if we had more capacity there would really boost, um, has the potential to really boost farmers' income um with, with those value added opportunities. But so much of the, the processing capacity is um, you know, located. Regionally, it's there, but um, you know, we still are very much um we're, we're sort of hamstrung by our um seasons. And I do apologize for my infant crying in the background. Um, you, myself.
Great. Yeah, I also noticed the, the high proportion of land devoted to animal feed. And um I, I wonder if, I guess I wonder, I mean, it seems, I wonder if that's changing now as the nature of agriculture changes more to CSAs and things like that. Um, but it seems like that could be part of the solution where, you know, we grow instead of growing for animals, we're growing plants for humans and then selling them locally. I don't know.
And conversations we have with people about what they want to see in the vision for Tompkins County. Um, it's this, you know, one of the big questions was how much um sort of what percentage of people's diets are coming from local sources? And that's just kind of an unanswerable question right now, given that we're not, no one's collecting data on that or measuring that in any um empirical way. But I think that um, that's certainly one thing that that thematically across all the conversations we've had is people want to see um increased capacity for local production and shifting, you know, more of our diet away from um more national and global supply chains to being more self-sufficient here. Um, you know, because of where we're at, we're probably, you know, it's, we're, we're not a breadbasket, we're not um central California, but we, I think we have a lot of opportunity in that, in that way.
Great.
Well, Mark, you might not be able to see all the folks, but Martha, is that her?
Oh, thank you, Rod.
Yeah, thanks, Rod. Uh, maybe Katie could stop sharing the screen if there's nothing more to, you know, to look in there. Um, yeah, there's, there's actually a lot of work going on about um the ag solar uh um, you know, conundrum. And, and there's, there are a lot of, a lot of people developing crops that work in between solar panel rows. There's, there's of course sheep, there's uh, you know, the uh solar panels uh around this county, very often you can find sheep grazing um among the panels. So there really are a lot of, a lot of people working on this issue. And you know, there are things that you can do by, in terms of rotating or, or angling the uh the panels a different way so that crops can actually get enough sun and rain. So um it's, it's a real, it's certainly an issue that I think statewide people are recognizing and working on. So um the other, the other angle on this, in my view, is the uh, the way that's, that solar and wind developers have to pay for interconnections to the grid. The fact that the grid uh that it, when, when you're developing a solar project, let's say, you have to absorb all the costs of, of um connecting your project to NiSEGS grid. If that cost were spread out like across the whole, you know, across basically this, the state tax base instead, then people could, developers could make more rational decisions like that might be farther from an interconnection. Um, but would be using fallow land, let's say, you know, land that's not good for productive agriculture, but it happens to be a little farther away from the grid, would still, would be economic if those developers didn't have to pay for each project um to be connected. So there are a number of policy issues that I believe the state is looking at that, that might help with this issue. But yeah, it's, it's certainly a, a concern and Don raises a good point, but um I wouldn't just give up on either agriculture or renewable energy.
Great. Thanks, Martha. Anyone? Go ahead.
Uh, to, to follow up on what Martha just said, I think it, it may take a little bit more because the uh the, 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 if, if so, this is generally located in proximity to transmission lines and some of our, some of the land that might be best suited to solar panels, which is to say not so great for agriculture, are located in the southern part of the county in Caroline, Dambie, Newfield, where the transmission lines are often not. Um, and that uh means that, you know, it's a larger investment needs to be made in order to run them out to where it makes more sense to put the panels.
Right, that's the point. And if, if the cost of those connections isn't just born for each project, if the cost is born across, you know, let's say the state paid, paid the fee, each developer pays a certain fee, but they don't have to pay all the cost of that interconnection, um then there's a way you can make those decisions much more rationally.
Indeed.
Right, right. Cause right now land is getting tremendous pressure to turn really nice farmland into solar panels because we have the transmission lines running across our town. This is not where we wanted putting solar panels as a community, but that's where they're gonna go.
Right, exactly.
Great, okay. All right. Um, thanks, everybody. Thanks, Katie, so much for engaging with us on this important topic today and um.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. And is there, wh- what would be the best way for me to connect with folks who'd be willing to host a conversation in their community or, or just even put out, um, you know, if we scheduled something, put out a call to your newsletter or your constituents? Um, is that something we could do? The email or, you know, folks?
Sure. I, I think via email to any of the membership or um, or again, you could just um, you know, send something to T-Cog as a group through Katrina.
And uh. Great. Great. Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Katie.
Great. Take care. Bye-bye.
Take care. Bye-bye. All right. So um, let's move on to the um reports, uh discussion from um code enforcement. And um, let's see, I think um, I don't know if Marty's here. I think Greg Potter's here to um lead that discussion. So I'll turn it over to you, Greg.
Great, thanks, Mark. Uh, for those of you who do not know me, my name is Greg Potter. I'm the Information Technology Services Director for Tompkins County. Um, joining me from the county this afternoon is Catty Ann Campbell, who is the GIS Administrator, uh, who also works for the Information Technology Services or ITS, and John Halachek, who works for the Department of Emergency Response as dispatch coordinator.
Dispatch coordinator.
Um, so, so is it, is it? I've got an echo on somebody's side. Thank you, Mark. I think, okay. Um, so I'm gonna start off and, and define the, the um the current circumstances and, and many of you probably looked at that workflow chart that we sent out with the agenda and uh we're a little bit scared, but let me uh assure that it's not that complicated. To start with, I just wanted to introduce um that it is a rather sticky situation we're in and one we hope to discuss and preview and, and um lead to some resolution with you as a starting point in the future. I've had some discussions as well um with the building and code enforcement officers and and I see that Marty is here as well, that could represent best their situation. Um, so as the technology of, of address management evolves or um particularly around those um the use of addresses in the nine-one-one dispatch centers or the next gen dispatch center, there's a, a really important need to standardize how those addresses are managed or assigned and incorporated into various systems, starting with nine-one-one. And we've done pretty well so far to manage that um best as we can with the collaboration with each municipality in Tompkins County. But there's a different approach that many counties in New York State have taken in the past, and that includes the centralization of address management at the county level. So there's a split between um how addresses are assigned or managed in New York State between counties and those that are assigned specifically at the local community level or a split between the two. So we've been working uh pretty hard these past, um, let's say, five years to um to collaborate with a handful of municipalities to improve the coordination um for addresses as they're changed or assigned, so they feed into the county systems, um particularly nine-one-one system. But what we're finding is that it's becoming a little bit more complicated. There's more development going on these days. And we hope to um work with the municipalities to improve it and, and get some directive from you to start with on how best to, to manage that and to know that we're working on that in the background. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass it on because this gets a little bit more um um to, to present some examples of why this is important. I'm gonna pass this on to John, who can discuss why um this is important from a dispatch perspective.
All right. Thanks, Greg, and good afternoon, everyone. So to continue on with what Greg was saying, for, for us in public safety and specifically within the Department of Emergency Response at the county and our nine-one-one operation, um, both addressing by name, so to be specific, street name, as well as the, the number assigned to any given address within a municipality is very important to us. Um, traditionally, twenty years ago, the majority of the citizenry in the county had a traditional landline phone in their residence. When you dialed nine-one-one, that address appeared on the screen of the phone within the nine-one-one center. Today, uh, that number is perhaps up twenty percent. And most everyone is reaching nine-one-one via cellphone. And although there, the cell phones of today uh provide a wealth of information, they still do not provide the technology. they still do not provide the technology to give us a exact location of where a caller is. So uh, customarily, we have to ensure by asking the caller if they know what their exact location is. That basic information determines how the entirety of a nine one one call is going to flow. The location dictates what resources are going to be allocated and where those resources are going. So with respect to that immediate question that gets asked of every nine one one caller, so too is it very important to have um, the best possible addressing and naming of streets um, within the entirety of the county. So to give you an example, um, back at the beginning of summer, uh, in late June, uh, there was a call uh, up in the town of Groton, near the Kiwi County line, specifically on Champlin Road. And uh, through the course of the call, and the caller uh, was contacting nine one one by cellphone, um, Champlin Road running through Tompkins County and Kiuga County, on both sides of the county line, the street name is exactly the same, and the numerical assignment for addresses as you cross the county line in either direction are identical. That is a dangerous scenario to have because what can wind up happening in the course of conversation between the dispatcher and the caller, they can do everything correctly, validate that address correctly, only to find out that that address where that caller was is in the other jurisdiction. And customarily, nine one one centers um, don't always have um, addressing data for an adjacent county. So that's one example of where it's very important um, to think about centralization of addressing and determining future names of streets. Because if you take it from the um, the entirety of the county perspective, so there may be, and I'm just gonna use Main Street as an example. Um, most municipalities have a block range that runs from one to a hundred of Main Street if they have a Main Street in their municipality. Now, if you have ten or fifteen or eighteen different jurisdictions in a given county, you have to be very careful and ensure that you know what jurisdiction you're talking about. From a safety perspective, we query to the caller, what jurisdiction are you in? Okay, but if you get less common street names, so using Champlin Road as an example, let's say you might have two or three of them in a couple of different municipalities across the county. You would not want to assign the same numerical range to all three of those. And what can happen and has often happened in the past is municipalities will make their decisions on on how to number and what to name particular streets, and then at the county level, when you're managing nine one one resources, you're doing programming, you're doing GIS mapping, all of a sudden you have three identical sets of numerical ranges with the name of the street that is exactly the same. And really, that is the primary motivation moving forward is to um, centralize the operation so that the totality of all the information is evaluated against each other and so that we are not inadvertently building um, these public safety scenarios that could be have very deadly consequences for our citizenry here in the county. Greg, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you.
Um, so behind the scenes and and I'll pass it on to Catty Ann, when when we talked about the management of addresses in Tompkins County, we're a little bit more sophisticated than most locations, and we've actually put a point on a map for every single address in the county and and um, and are working through the county to add a point for every unit in every large apartment complex as well. So if somebody calls and identifies themselves as a living in an apartment complex with the unit, we'll know exactly what the unit number if they can tell us that. So that's important because it references that location of that unit to the call and the to the future incident for fire, any mess and law enforcement. So there's a lot that goes into defining how an address is 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 defined at at the development stage that feeds into how we manage it in database that manages and feeds into how we import that into various systems in the county, particularly nine one one. Um, so Catty Ann has taken the lead in in coordinating with a handful of municipalities to improve that and to share the information and and improve the coordination through an online transaction form. And we've made great progress in doing that, but we're uh, now evaluating whether or not that's enough. Um, and whether we need to discuss taking it a step further to to look at the standardization of addresses across the county as a whole. Um, so so Kat, the organ, uh, the municipalities that you've worked with, correct me if I'm wrong, is the town of Dryden, uh, uh, Dambie, Dryden, Town of Ithaca?
Yes, um, actually quite a bit of them. So maybe what I'll do is uh, I'll share my screen and then explain what this all is to you guys. Um, so let me just do this. Alrighty. Okay, can everyone see this dashboard? With a bunch of pretty pictures on it? A map in the middle?
Except for those who are calling in.
Hello, okay. Alrighty, just wanna make sure. Um, so what this is, a few years back, um, we had um, someone in the this um, address um specialist in the nine one one department. And one of the big issue was that we had issues with like, she was getting addresses from everyone, some was on the phone, some was over like napkins on paper that she would write it on, there were sticky notes everywhere, it was, it was a little bit uh, cumulated, um, very um, not very helpful. But anyway, and so we we said, this is ridiculous, we have to come up with some sort of piece of technology to be able to solve some of this problem. And so part of that problem, the problem solving was um, essentially creating an what we call an address management form. Um, it is in Laserfish, and so the idea was to get the different municipalities to submit through that form process as opposed to all these different avenues that they were doing before. And so all of this information is collected and then it comes into both GIS, nine one one and the assessment department. And we all get this information and and we process in the GIS group because of the fact that I work directly with the nine one one system in putting the addresses in the nine one one. Um, we have this whole process that we collect the information um, from the form. Then I would put it on the GIS maps, um, including today, I actually just did one not two minutes ago. Um, and then that puts itself way up to like on a monthly basis to the nine one one system. So I am a very visual person, I don't like things being an email and all of that. And so all these things were coming in the email at me, and I wanna see it on a map. So what I did was, um, and it is a typical GIS thing to do nowadays, you guys have seen COVID dashboards, all these things. So taking that same principle of a COVID-like dashboard, this is not COVID, thank goodness, this is addresses. Um, I basically devised a a system, a dashboard of all these address changes that are going on just so I could keep track of them um, on a visually um, basis and be able to kind of have something to communicate back out to everyone else. And so what you're seeing is all of the address submittals that we've had for twenty twenty one. Now, we've had over six thousand of these through the years, but I took twenty twenty one and decided to capture this um, in this dashboard. And so to date, from January until now, we've had a hundred and twenty eight of these submittals from various different municipalities that you see on the bottom here. And so, you know, I maybe I shortened them, so it's like Caroline, Dryden, Enfield, T N Philo Groton, and Ithaca and all of these. And then you could see the different address submittal by each municipality. Um, for instance, the Town of Ithaca is, has submitted about thirty six of these. Um, and so you have Lansing that's coming into second place at this point, um, with about thirty of these submittals and so forth and so on. And um, the middle pieces like kind of the type of addresses that they're submitting, so whether they're new addresses or modification of current um, addresses. And then submitted by property type is over on the upper left. And that's just, you know, I break them into residential, agricultural, um, and so forth and so on. Um, and so the residential category obviously is uh, is really kicking it here, um, in the bright orange um, for residential. One of the neat thing about this is that you could actually zoom in on the map. You could click on these and see, you know, kind of get a little bit of information on the address itself and where the source is coming from and all those kind of things. And so this is actually live. Um, not everyone can look at it right now because I was literally just like changing it a few minutes before this meeting. And so, but that is technically can be open to the municipalities or anyone who would like to look at this dashboard. Um, yeah, so back to Greg, um, and any questions, uh, let me know. I've been doing addressing for quite some time and it's just uh, it's fun and painful, but uh, yeah.
Thank you, Kat.
Sure.
Um, so um, I I guess the, to to close this discussion um, is 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 to say that um, many people think about address management and think about how mundane it might be, but it's really important. And it's, it's getting more important in the future as we evolve into new systems and technology. Um, and also the the change at the county level, because there was a person that was dedicated just to managing addresses for emergency response. We've shifted things around a little bit in the county, and that has become primarily a responsibility out of ITS, out of GIS and the work that Kat's doing as as a, as a difference. And so we're reevaluating now how addresses were managed in the past and how they need to be modified in the future as part of this discussion. So Mark, I think that would conclude anything we have to say on this topic and and uh,
Great.
Pass it back.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Thank you, Catty Ann, thank you, John. I'll open it up for for questions or discussion, I think. Rod, did you have something?
Just, I do know that Marty is on the phone. Marty, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything from a codes perspective. I know you've been very involved in the conversation.
Yeah, I think um, yeah, we we just completed, and I thank you for allowing me to be in this meeting, uh, all the members here, but we just completed our uh, our annual meeting as code enforcement officials in the county, and we also invite uh, pretty much anybody that that wants to come in, we've never said no to anybody. So, you know, we have Greg's team, we have assessment. Um, and this is still a priority for the code enforcement in in Tompkins County. Um, they do feel that this is an important task for nine one one addressing and those emergency responders to have that consistency across municipal borders. Uh, just like was stated before, if you have the uh, the names of the roads that are the same and the addressing is the same, that confuses the emergency responders and delays that response to those individuals. And uh, that's a key element to those, those emergency responders getting there in a timely fashion, and it could be to save the life uh, if they get there one minute before they need to. Um, I think that's all I have to say on this, and I apologize for not sharing my uh, my, so I'm saving up my cellular data.
Thanks, Marty.
Yep. Yep, thank you, Marty. Um, Joel, did you have a a question or comment? Did we lose Joel?
He's muted.
Sorry, sorry about that. Um, John spoke to the the confusion associated with having different towns with the same thing. Is there a proposed fix?
Um, the um, there is not right now, and we've been working out on the backend to improve the circumstances based on, you know, people coordinating with us to manage it. But ultimately, the proposed fix may be that the county becomes the legal authority for assigning addresses for the the entire county, not the municipality. And that's, that's more typical across the country, and in it, it's probably split between fifty fifty of the counties in New York State now.
I would agree with Mr. Potter as well. Uh, that's, that's the whole intent of why I came to PCOG last year to gain support uh, from you all, to then go back to Mr. Potter and say, okay, can we put together a policy on how this would be implemented at the county level, um, having the county take the ownership and have that consistency across the municipal borders.
Well, how would, how would, how would having the county do it um, address the the issue of the multiple names, multiple identical names in different municipalities?
It would focus first on going forward and making sure that no, there's no duplication in new addresses. And coordinating with the municipality on the assignment of road names and address numbers for those road names as they're created. So they don't duplicate with other municipalities in Tom, in in, or in Tompkins County that they may may not be aware of.
Okay.
Um, there's many counties that have gone through the process which have renumbered and renamed streets as part of this process. We're not advocating that. We're just saying, from day one forward, can we improve what we have in place for the process for assigning new addresses?
I, I also think the key, I'm sorry, but the the key element also is, and I apologize because I can't see anyone else on the screens because my cellphone screen is so small, but um, the key element is I, as a code enforcement official who would issue an address, only have limited information. The county has much more information than I do, and the names of all the municipalities and the roads uh, and the addresses in throughout the municipality. So I, as the Town of Ithaca, have a limited amount of information.
Great, thanks, Marty. Bob Lynch, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I think I I raised this about a year ago, and and it was already answered, you're not planning on changing uh, the numbers of existing residences, but you do get a problem when you have like the one hundred block of Podunk Road, for example. Uh, and supposing there are two Podunk Roads in Tompkins County, maybe one's in Ulysses and the other one's over in Dryden. Uh, how do you, uh, you know, you're not changing, uh, I wouldn't expect at least that new homes uh, and the one hundred block of Podunk Road would all of a sudden be seven hundred something, they'd still be one hundred something. But it would just be uh, it would be difficult sometimes to interweave those two if you keep the existing numbering the same.
Right, so our approach on that would be, we don't know the extent of the problem now, but we'd have to do a little bit more analysis. We had to recently go through this with the adjacent counties because of the incident that John was talking about. So there's a bigger statewide issue about the same topic that's being discussed now at the state level. So the the same thing has to happen at the local level, we'd have to identify if there is replication or duplication between street names and numbers, and then look at those individually and talk to the municipalities about that or figure out a technical way to differentiate those those duplications in our systems. So I don't have an answer for you right now, but it's a possibility, we're gonna have to fine tune this a little bit more as we go through it and learn more about it. But I can't think of anything right now that jumps out of duplication between road names and ranges other than Main Streets um, in Tompkins County.
Greg, if if I can just jump in, um, additionally, what the example that you're giving in a hun, in the one hundred block range of of Podunk Road, um, what some uh, municipal authorities have done throughout the country to resolve that issue is they've left alone uh, the numeric, but they've added a directional onto the street. So uh, north, south, east or west or something of that nature to further differentiate, uh, which was seen as a less painful uh, way of addressing the situation without having to change the actual numbers of that particular address. But uh, again, uh, as we're all talking here, Greg, there is no no effort underway to to undertake anything that remotely looks like that. Greg, there is also a question sitting in chat about Eagle View and pictometry.
The answer to the chat question is yes, provided the county budget is passed. There is a a request from the I T G I S group to fund a new flyover for pictometry or Eagle View this spring. Of which the majority of it is being covered from a grant from New York City Department of Homeland Security. Out of Department of Emergency Response. So the difference is an O T R out of the I T S budget and Martha just gave the thumbs up, so.
I thought Eagle View was a street name, so. So Greg, just clarify, are you looking for support or feedback from T C O G on this proposal?
Yeah, I think so. Be I I think we had a conversation and 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 we kind of regrouped and said, you know, before we go too far with this. Let's present it to T C O G. We talked to the building code enforcement group about it. And the next step for us was to talk to he T C O G and make sure it's something that you would support us spending time and effort on to move it forward. I mean, if there's a great opposition to it, we're, you know, we're gonna take a different approach.
Okay, that's that's great. That's good to know, so.
So I wanted to add just a little bit, I mean, not to toot our own horn here, but you do have a very good G I S group. I'm under Greg and his direction, so we have all kinds of tools to be able to just look at issues of this nature. We've already done some of this analysis to see like how many road duplications we have, streets with the wrong parody. Like I've done and even on either side, I was just doing some of that this morning. So in terms of like the technical thing, we're all set there. We're all, you know, we can definitely get that done. We also have a lot of data from the state as well that we can incorporate. And look at all of these issues and just, you know, other case studies of this nature as well across like the counties. And different municipalities in New York State. So I just wanted to add that. So it's not, it's impossible. It's just that we definitely need some support from the top. To pursue this, so, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Katie Anne. Yeah. So I I guess I, you know, I I'd be willing. I don't have, you know, from my perspective, Supervisor Caroline, I don't have any reservations about this. But I don't know if if we want to offer a resolution today or wait till December. But I I certainly, I I certainly support a the a countywide coordination of of addresses. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Is that in fact what we're talking about? Is supporting a countywide. Assignment of of addresses going forward?
Well, I I think at the end of the day, there, Joel, there's gonna be a question of. The legal authority or or where this goes. But there's a lot that we can do in in improving what we have or now just in terms of coordination. And and I don't know if it's necessary that every municipality legally assigns the authority to the county for assignment of addresses. As we move forward it, so it would be great if they all did. At the end of the day, I think that's the ultimate best scenario. But I think we need to build it and prove to you that the process works and the system works before we make that translation into a legal resolution.
So to what then is the, what is it that's being asked of us?
Well, we we wanted to bring this to your attention, first and foremost, that this work is going on. It's happening with with people within your organizations. To let you know that we're trying to improve the way that addresses are presented or assigned and and presented to county. To include in the the dispatch center. And then we're looking at ways to improve the circumstances going forward. One of those being could be the eventual authorization for the county to take over address management completely, but we're not there yet.
Rod?
If I if I may, the ultimate goal would be for the county, that's what has been talked about with Mr. Potter. It's the the ultimate goal to have the county issue the addresses for that consistency purposes across those municipalities.
Yeah, and 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 we have not at the county level had any discussions about what that means with people and processes. And we're glowed and stuff like that. We just know it's the right thing to do and we're working on it behind the scenes.
Marty, go ahead.
I was gonna say Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but each municipality currently has the authority because the county relinquished that authority. And for the for the county to regain that, the municipality have to press pass a resolution. Authorizing the county to be the issuer of the addresses for that municipality again. Is that correct, Greg?
That's what I understand and that's what I've seen happen in other locations in New York State. It's a legal question that we would next get the county attorney involved in to provide. An opinion on that as well, Marty, just so we know what we're looking at.
Right, so T C O G's involvement is is key here, but it's also extremely important for your local municipalities, your boards. To understand what what the process is at your own local levels, not at the county level as well.
I I suggest that we take this back to our respective boards. I mean, I think it's a good idea. I totally understand the idea behind it. But I could tell you that right now and then turn around and discover that most of my board has a real hang up about wanting to name streets. And, you know, my assurance didn't do anything for you. So I think bringing this back at December after we've all talked to our boards would give you a much stronger understanding of where the towns are at.
Great, I agree with that, Joel. Couple of other hands, did anybody else? Rod?
I I guess I saw today as more like a just a straw poll, like is there enough support for the county to move forward? You know, the resolutions would come later, information going back to the boards would come later. When but I I I guess I saw today as more like, is anyone opposed to the county continuing to explore this and move in the direction that they have been moving? And I have absolutely no problems.
That said, I think it would be, I think it would be helpful if we had a sense for whether or not the boards are would be in support of moving in this direction. And and I I I concur that the probably the most constructive thing we could do is take it back to our boards and get a read for whether or not they they do support it.
Yeah, Joel, I guess my point was maybe they don't quite have it packaged yet in a way, I mean, it sounds like there's no. What they're doing right now is pretty innocuous. I mean, it's not rocking any boats really. So to let them do a little bit more investigation and then there's something more formal. That, you know, we're not then taking it back to our board saying, please say yes, we're just saying, here's the information, this is what's happening. We want to make sure that your this municipality approves of continuing to take further steps.
Great, that's that sounds really good. I I agree. Any other, so? So we'll have the discussions with our our respective boards and. And 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 bring it back to T C O G next in December, so.
We'll we'll continue to make progress and move forward on this based on today's conversation. And then keep in touch with the progress and hopefully be able to answer the more specific questions in the future.
Great, thanks so much, Greg, Katie Anne, John, yeah, Marty. Okay, and then. I have Martha, do you have something to to discuss report on countywide code enforcement?
Yeah, thanks very much for having me and I, you know, you have sixty-some pages in your packet that I'm sure everybody read. And there'll be a quiz at the end of this. Now, and so the main, the main summary on packet page twenty-four and five is maybe, you know, a place to look. But very, very briefly, the idea of consolidated code enforcement in some form has been discussed over the years. And you know, as a health and safety issue, as a equity issue, a bunch of different, you know, conversations have happened. Earlier this year at the Planning Advisory Board, C J Randall, the planner from Town Lansing, brought this up again and said, you know, we're we're seeing a lot of. Retirements among code officials and sort of impending retirements and we're worried a little bit about. Being able to hire enough people. Some of the towns are worried about being able to cover that function. So she thought it was might be important to start the conversation at the county level. I picked up on that. My committee is the Housing and Economic Development Committee, so we had, we started a conversation about it there. She was very, very helpful in sending me what you have in your packet, the the study that was done about Tioga County. And we looked at that a month ago at the at the committee level. And I just want to give you a heads up, we, because of the way of our budget process, the timing of our budget process. We've actually put into our tentative budget and along with Greg's proposal, this is hasn't been finally voted on yet. It's in the tentative budget to to do a similar study as what you saw from Tioga County. To do that for Tompkins County next year and seventy-five thousand dollar study. The idea would be to interview you folks, your code and planning officers. Maybe realtors, different, very similar study to what Tioga County did. And really find out what functions might be shareable, what might be better left at the local level. And kind of what what's the best fit for Tompkins County and for each individual municipality. So I know Marty Mosley has been talking with C J a lot about this. Jay Franklin is also on this call and he's he's talked about how this would be if it were consolidated in similar way as. We consolidated assessment back in nineteen seventy. There might be similar benefits, especially in professionalization of. Things like energy code, which is getting more and more complicated and and technical. And maybe I'll just let let Jay jump in here as to some of the the possible advantages. Let me just say, this is not in any way a decision. This is, you know, potentially a decision, assuming the budget passes as it is. A a decision to do a study, so I just wanted to make sure you folks were aware of all this and it was, you weren't blindsided by it. But we'd happy to let Jay weigh in a little bit on that, on what you're thinking.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me this afternoon. You know, this is exactly what we went through back in nineteen sixty-eight when we looked at consolidating the assessment function at the county level. We had a lot of part-time assessors who were looking to retire. There weren't, you know, they weren't making any new assessors through high school and college even back then. So by consolidating, they were able to take fourteen part-time individuals and have five professional assessors or appraisal staff. When they did that throughout the years, you know, it wasn't done as cost savings back then. I think we saved five thousand on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. But now we save over six hundred thousand and I think we do a pretty good job. But through this and consolidating, we can specialize, so we can have a commercial appraiser. We can have someone who dives deep into solar panels and how to value that. So being able to consolidate, we have a uniform database, uniform procedures. So it it can work. We also deal with a county code enforcement office in Seneca County. My office does the assessment function for the town of Covert in Seneca County. So we deal with both a combination of a county code office and also the local town land use authority there. So it can work. For me, if we do a study, you can always make get good out of that. It's not saying we need to do anything, you know, who who knows what's gonna come out of it. But at least we have the information to make the decision in order to provide better service to our property owners here in Tompkins County.
Great, thank you, Jay, thank.
C J came to our Housing and Economic Development Committee meeting this morning and mentioned that, I think it's along with Marty at the in the town of Ithaca. Working on the new platform, Open Gov services to. So some of the, some of the forms, some of the the. You know, other, you know, the kind of forms that you have to submit can be consolidated and shared. So they're all different levels of of sharing literally and and so it seems like that one is is kind of underway at this point. But just wanted to make sure you you knew about this.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Nancy has a question.
Yeah, just, uh, thank you for that. And it's good to have the heads up about the potential study. One feature that may need to be considered is that I know in the town and I believe in the village of Truemensburg. Our code enforcement officer isn't just a building inspector, but they also do zoning enforcement. And everybody's zoning is really different. And so figuring out how to customize or allow for some flexibility. There's also a matter, and this won't be a surprise to either Rod Howe or to Marty, if he's still on the phone. I think there's a real matter of tone in terms of how different communities choose to do their enforcement. And I do want to give a complete shout out to the town of Ithaca, who when we were without a a code enforcement officer. We were able to purchase some services from the town of Ithaca to do the standard building inspection work. But there was no zoning enforcement that was going on with that. And because this New York State Building Code is standardized, I mean, that is. A case in favor of it, but even the way you enforce that, I mean, we've had two condemnations. Of properties based on individuals inability to maintain their homes. And how those condemnations are handled, I'm sure varies community to community. So the it but mostly it's the zoning piece that I think needs to somehow get considered in all of this. So, you know, happy to look at it, just pointing that out.
Yeah, that's a really good point. And if you look at the at the study that's in your packet, it goes through these different options. And kind of, you know, that 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 seems to be one piece that tends to stay with the local municipality. I mean, counties don't do zoning, so, you know, it it is, that's certainly a local issue. But there are other ways to consolidate up to up to that level, let's say. So so go back and look at the packet, even just the executive summary will give you a good, you know, ten, ten pages or so will give you a good flavor. Of of the questions we're gonna ask. And and if we do get this passed in the budget, you'll obviously be. Well, I won't be analyzing anymore, but I I presume that you will be part of sort of designing the study and to make sure that. Whoever you think ought to be interviewed or what forms they should look at, what of your local laws they should look at. That you'll be able to have that kind of input. I and I really want to mostly say, the county is not approaching this with a preconceived notion. That we want to do X, Y, or Z. The county is is proposing this as, let's take a look at this. I'm pleased that Jay feels like, you know, as a department, that this would be a function he would feel comfortable hosting and would appreciate that. You know, if this were something that was just gonna be foisted on some department, that would be really, that'd be tough. But the fact that Jay sees value in this and along with the planning department, Jay. Jay and and Katie Borgela have said that they could work together on sort of rolling out this study. So again, no preconceived notion on the part of the county about doing this at all or what what it would look like if we if we did do something.
Great. Ronnie, did you have a a comment or a question?
Oh, yes, I just want to be sure that the this study or this effort does not in any way. Replace or supersede municipal code enforcement officers. The village of Lansing goes to a great lengths to vet, hire and train and support. Our municipal code enforcement officer. And I would not like to see the county come in and say, you can no longer perform those functions. We will do that and you will no longer do this. So this study, I believe, I would be in favor of having an opt-in or opt-out feature with the study. If this if if this is implemented within the county.
That is exactly the the idea we, you know, that we have going into this. That it would be even an à la carte menu and kind of depending upon what services would be desirable. You know, then we would structure, you know, what kind of staff response, what kind of staff. capacity we need at the county. So yeah, it would be very much a, an individual choice. I do encourage you to look through the study because I think there are something like eight counties in New York that already provide some kind of county level code enforcement, but they're all a little bit different. So.
I think Marty wanted to chime in on this too. Go ahead, Marty.
Yes, sir. So Ronnie raises a great point in that New York State and its laws has, has constructed itself to already have the ability to opt out of code enforcement. So in the event that a, we'll say a village would not want to have code enforcement anymore, they could opt out. There's a, there's a process for that at the state level and then that would fall back to a town. If the town said, we can't handle that, they would opt out. That would fall back to a county. And if the county said, we cannot handle this, it would then fall back to the state of New York. So there is a process associated with this currently set up in New York State law. I'd, I'd be more than happy if my town supervisor would participate in anything or any helpful information about this study in any way.
That might be tough, huh?
Okay, super.
Yes, I said, this is just a heads up that assuming it gets passed, that this is something the county will be doing and you can sort of expect to hear more about it later.
So Martha, does that include reaching out to see who might be on the committee? That would, or would you be hiring an outside consulting firm and then they would be, they would be interviewing people, I guess, right?
Yeah, the study by, of Tioga County was by a CGR out of Rochester. They've done work for us in other areas. We would obviously issue an RFP to see what consultants are available, but you know, that, that study looked good to me as far as, you know, the completeness of it and the thoroughness of it. So that's the kind of thing I assume the county would, would look to do. And if there's, you know, if there's a steering committee of some sort needed, I'm sure somebody would come and ask you guys, who wants to help? I believe, I think Katie and Jay will be, have said that they would help sort of manage the study from the staff point.
Great. Any other questions for Martha? Comments? Thanks. Thanks, Martha.
Thank you very much. Marty's got his hand up again.
Okay, go for it.
Just, I had a question. There was a discussion at the code enforcement meeting about having a permitting system, maybe county-wide. So I was wondering if this study would also include that possibility? I'm in discussion with the Open Gov folks, so at least give me a pricing on, on that capability right now and any cost-saving measures. Now, there's different options, obviously, with different scenarios with the cloud-based systems. But it's, it's something I just had a question on.
I think anything is, is on the table, you know, if they're, you know, by next time, by next year and a few months when this gets going, there might be new software and new options. So I'm sure whatever's out there would be considered.
I think Marty's questions just point to, it would probably be helpful to have a steering committee because they may think of things that maybe, well, I'm sure Jay and Katie would think of everything, but just in case they didn't, the things to include in, in a study.
All right. I think Katie, Katie's really good at taking notes. I don't know about Jay, but Katie is, so.
Bob Lynch?
Yes, I wanted to second what Ronnie said a few minutes ago. I think that municipality should be given the opt-in and opt-out opportunity here because with all due respect to Rod Howe, I have constituents who own properties in both Enfield and the Town of Ithaca. And they say, I don't want the building codes that are in the Town of Ithaca. I like it the way it is in Enfield. I like the hometown control. So I think you're going to get each municipality kind of wanting to set not only its own enforcement, but also its own building standards. And I worry that if you go to a consolidated code enforcement, pretty soon you'll have consolidated codes. And I think some of the towns are going to resist that.
All right. So I.
Ronnie has his hand up.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to say to Marty that the Shared Services Committee within the county, the countywide permitting process or system might be a future subject that we could look at for shared services. So when you're doing this study, be sure and pass along the information to Lisa Holmes and we can perhaps fit it into a future shared services discussion.
Yeah, she actually, she and I talked about that earlier and this wouldn't fit for 2022 because the shared services I plan is about things that you're going to implement. So we first have to do the study and come up with a, with an idea of what we would want to implement. And then that could go in next year's, assuming the timeline, go into next year's shared services plan. But again, I really want to reiterate, this is, this is about what works for the towns. And if you feel like you've got this function covered and you like how it goes, then great, you know, then you'll say that when the consultant calls. And if you, but if you feel like, hey, you know, our person's about to retire, maybe we would, it would be better to have some, at least some part of this function shared. You know, this is really, you're going to be consulted. You're, this is going to be designed by all of you together with the county, not by the county.
Great. And Joel? You muted, Joel.
I think, I think Bob put his finger on the, what is activated, the problem, if any, which is that we have a uniform code. There's only one building code for the state of New York. What varies is the local enforcement of it. And like the local assessment, which, you know, was a problem back then, that's activated a sticking point. If some people like the lax enforcement that some municipalities have of the code that's already in place, as opposed to enforcing it uniformly, which might require some people who do abandon, you know, the, the ease with which they have come to become accustomed in, in, in favor of something more rigorous. But that too will be, and can and should be part of the discussion when we get around to evaluating that report.
Great. Duly noted. So, all right. I think, I think we should move on. And I, I appreciate the information, Martha, and so we'll.
Don, if you want to put your question in chat, I'll be, I'll, I'll see what you've got.
Did I miss somebody, Martha? Who was that?
I saw Don's hand up.
Go ahead, Don.
I, I just wanted to say I agree with Bob Lynch.
Okay.
All right. Well.
Okay, great.
Thanks very much. And I hope people stay open-minded and see what we can accomplish together. Thanks a lot.
Great. Yeah, thank you, Martha. So I'm going to expedite a little bit. Fortunately for the, moving on to the vice chair report, I don't have anything to report. And so by the December meeting, I will, or we will have done some outreach and should have, hope, hope to have a candidate by then. So and so I guess I'll move on to the subcommittee reports and George, the water quality. Is he still here?
George had to leave.
Okay. All right. So moving on to, thank you. Emergency planning and preparedness. I will just say that, you know, our group continues to meet. And earlier, Dan Lamb forwarded a resolution that the Dryden Town Board passed this week. And so I would encourage everybody to, to look at this and consider it, modifying it for your municipality to encourage the state to establish a new New York State Rural Ambulance Task Force. Senate Bill S 3503C. So again, Katrina forwarded the, the draft resol, or the, the resolution from, from Dryden earlier this afternoon and you can use that as a template. So, and that's, that's all I have to report.
Is there a predicted, is there a time with which you'd like to have that dealt with?
I don't know what the timeline is on this. Do you know, Rorden?
So that particular bill was actually adopted at the end of the last legislative session. It was a, it was spearheaded by Senator Hinchey, but it did pass both the Assembly and the Senate. It was assumed it was going to die an ignominious death on then Governor Cuomo's desk. But there is now some hope that Governor Hochul would sign it. What it does is it establishes a, an independent commission with members assigned by various entities, including the governor's office, the Assembly Speaker, Senate, Senate Leader and so on. And the task of this committee is to specifically study EMS and ambulance services in rural New York. So that it leaves out the city specifically. It leaves out Long Island specifically. And it looks at what is the delivery mechanism like throughout upstate New York? What are the problems? Basically, the kinds of things we've talked about over the years. Albany is finally willing to take a look at it. But it does require the governor's signature. So the timeline is as soon as she decides to sign it, then this can get going. So in Dan Lamb's conversations with Senator Hinchey directly, the senator had suggested that if we get a lot of local municipalities to support the governor signing it, that might, that might get her to, to make a decision as to whether she'll sign it or not.
Maybe we, we do not be appropriate for TCOG to votes, have a resolution support as well?
I would think it wouldn't hurt.
I'm willing to do that. Urged the governor to sign this legislation, which has already been passed.
You could make a motion, Joel.
That was a motion.
Based on the, based on the Danby draft.
It was an attempted emotion.
Okay. So some of, some of the wording in the resolution is specific to Dryden. So it, it, I would, we'd want to modify it.
Well, I mean, the motion here is simply to, to add our encouragement to the governor to sign it.
Great. Oh, great. Anyone want to second Joel's motion? Yeah. Rod, go ahead, or Henry? Yeah. Great.
You need me to say a second? I'll second it.
Yeah, I think, I think we have a second. So if there, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the resolution? Say aye or.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I just saw a blue Zoom hand from Linda Woodard, Woodward, Woodard. I don't know if she had a question or was voting, but.
I was slow on the uptake and I'm voting yes, sorry.
Can we also do the, our, from our municipalities?
Right, we should, I, I plan to do it for my municipality as soon as, next week, but.
Yeah.
That's what Dan was urging that we do as well. So, great. All right. Energy. Rod?
Really just an update from last time. So I believe that now Sustainable Tompkins has entered into a contract with Paul Fenn to get started on a study. And I can't remember if the city budget has passed, but I know that in the proposed city budget, there was money to continue the contract with Paul Fenn after the money from Park Foundation concluded. So, you know, Luis Aguirre Torres, myself, Gay will be meeting with Paul on a regular basis. And I, I reached out to three of you, two of you on the meeting here to see, we're just looking for one other person who represents one of the other municipalities who would be presumably coming on board in the future to, you know, probably meet every couple of months with, with that team. So I don't need any answer from, I'm not putting anyone on the spot. But that's the brief update that this is all about community choice segregation, of course, that we're starting to move forward with a study with Paul Fenn.
Great. Thanks, Rod. Anything else for, any questions for Rod? So with that, move on to, Bob, do you have anything for transportation? Oh, Bob had to leave, I believe. Yes, he did. So we'll skip that. And I don't, I don't know if, I see there is an opportunity for broadband update. I don't know if Nick Helm Holt is on the line. I don't. Or.
Yep, I'm here. I can give a brief update.
Great. Welcome.
Thanks. Yeah, I'll just give a, a couple of bullet points of what's happened since last TCOG meeting. So we had a broadband committee meeting September 16th. And following that, you know, we've had a pretty eventful couple of, a few weeks here on the, on the broadband front. Two resolutions at the county level. First was to release the funding contributions of the municipalities made to the, the broadband study. The second followed on a, a discussion at the Housing Economic Development Committee back in September, looking at the different options we had as paths forward for broadband. And following that discussion, there were sort of three different options that were outlined in a memo. I'm happy to, to circulate with anybody who wants to dig a little deeper into it. The first was to continue down the path of looking at the Fujitsu study. The second was to stop the Fujitsu study and do a physical inventory or survey of our broadband, fixed broadband, that is to say, wire, wired fiber or cable in the county, and then negotiate with the ISPs. And the third was to look at the municipal broadband model more in the line of what the Town of Dryden is doing at a, at a larger scale. And the feedback we got pretty quickly from the HED meeting was to, to go the second path and, and implement a, a physical survey of the county and then use that as a negotiation point with the ISPs. That was incorporated into a resolution the county adopted on October 5th. So following that, got working on a RFP and that was issued on October 21st for this physical survey. So that's, if you know of anybody who works in the telecommunications or broadband field and there may be of interest to them, I'd be happy to point them in the direction of where that RFP is, is listed to do this physical survey. Since then, we've also learned that there's a, another firm doing a very similar type of work at the state level, firm called ECC Technologies. They have sort of a multi-pronged assessment going on underway for the, the entire state, looking at a, an online broadband assessment tool. I'm, I can drop the link to that in the chat here for everyone. And also an inventory of, of broadband infrastructure across the state that they're, they're building out for PSC. So right now we're looking into what we can potentially do with that data and how we can access it. So we're trying to get in touch with the right folks at the state to get an understanding of how and when we may be able to, be able to use that data. Because if, if we are able to use it in a way that's satisfactory, it would, it would basically get rid of our need to have to do our own physical survey. It'd be, you know, duplicative. But like I said, there remains some questions to be answered on that. So any, in any event, it's been an eventful few weeks and we're looking forward to seeing some more projects come up, up in the coming weeks as well. We understand some other companies are, you know, planning some expansions throughout the county that are happening of their accord. We're not, you know, not, due to grow really incentives that like the county is pushing out there. So I can't give much more detail on that, but you know, there's, there are some, some things happening. And I think just the attention that the county is putting on this and then the towns are expressing this is paying off and is an attention of the ISPs are paying attention, seeing that there's, there's interest here. So with that, I'll wrap it up in a, in a, see if there's any questions. See, Joel, do you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Yeah, you mentioned the, the RFP having been issued on the 21st. What's the reply date for that and, and the timeline for implementation?
Great question. Deadline is November 23rd, just before Thanksgiving. And we'll, assuming we're going to, yeah, assuming everything goes smoothly, I think we would have to, have a decision for a finalist mid-December. So try to get somebody under contract before the end of the year. Have to, aim to have a decision for a finalist mid-December, so try to get somebody under contract before the end of the year.
Uh, we and Dambi have, uh. The board was keen to jump the gun here and have um authorized the same. Work to be done in the town of Dambi. Um, by Chuck Bartosh. Um, I would hope that we would not be duplicating your effort, but that in having, having done ours, it could be kind of taken into account and um.
Certainly, if if his work is wrapped up before we issue our um. Projects and we can use that data, then potentially we can shrink the scope of what we're trying to do here and incorporate that. So we'll, we'll just stay tuned and stay connected as as we move forward here.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? For Nick? Yeah, I had also wondered, Nick, about the state effort possibly supplanting our prior.
Yeah. It it's a, it's right now, it's unclear exactly how we'd be able to use the data, so that's the real. You know. Um, un- unknown, we'll say. Uh. Uh, you know, if it was just up to the ECC, who's the consultant doing it, it'd be no issue, but you know, ultimately their client is the state, so we have to. Determine what the state's comfortable with sharing and, and how we could potentially use it um going forward, so. Great, um. I'm gonna drop this link in the chat here, this empirestatebroadband.com. Um, please, uh. Uh, feel free to share this. This is the, this is the survey side of ECC's effort. Um, we actually already have quite a lot of responses in Tompkins County through people who found it through. Various, you know, channels. Um, and uh, yeah, anybody who wants to. Um, help inform the state's direction and broadband, I think, can can take that uh survey.
Great. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. Great. All right, um. I uh, promised uh JR Claiborne a few minutes at the end of the meeting, so um, thanks for sticking with us and um. Go ahead, JR, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
There, okay, thank you. I always have to look for the ever elusive mute button. But good afternoon, everybody. I'm JR Claiborne. I'm the director of Veteran Services for Tompkins County. And it's really interesting watching everything and sitting on this side of the aisle when for for a few years there I was on your side. But anyway, uh, just with a few minutes you have left, I came to you really for two things today. One is to give you a heads up about the uh. Uh, Veterans Day events that are coming, and also to ask your participation with Operation Green Light. Uh, with regards to the Veterans Day, actually, I've been working with a small group of folks that include uh. Representatives from the hospital, Cuba Medical Center. Um, also the DIA Downtown Nth Alliance and uh, different parts of Cornell, uh, Cornell University. And trying to pull together events. We've basically been collecting things that are happening around the county. And we're going to be promoting uh Veterans Week, which I hope is a good thing for a lot of people. Uh, because there are quite a few things that are here uh that uh are in celebration of our veterans. And so we'll keep, keep tuned for the news that we'll be looking for, actually pushing for. Veterans Week being the Saturday, November sixth through uh Saturday, November thirteenth. And I'll be having some uh a calendar posted to my website, and hopefully we'll have other news. Uh, the more important thing I'd like to ask you about is your participation, which would be really great if I can make this happen. I'm gonna share the screen, um, and this would be for what's called Operation Green Light. And uh, if you can see that, can everyone see the website?
It's, it's just blank for me.
It's just blank. Okay, technology, can't beat it.
Some of us learn food as well. So I can't see anything.
All right, then I will abandon that. If it lets me. Um, basically what what Operation Green Light is. Um, it's a collaboration right now that's being supported by the New York's uh State's Association of Counties. As well as my association, which is the New York State County Veteran Service Officers Association. As well as the counties, all sixty-two counties across the state. And this is something, it's this mission is to support uh veterans of all military conflicts with a special emphasis. On veterans of Iraq and Afghanistan, as well as raise awareness about our veterans. Green light. Above all of the entrances of the communities and, I'm sorry, of your residences and your, for your cases, their uh municipal facilities. Uh, I've already talked with the county and we've got some things in the works on lighting up our different buildings within the county, including the airport. Uh, I've got a request in with the city, and I would like to ask if you all would consider doing the same. And again, this would be just uh putting a green light bulb. Uh, at least that you're front-facing or prominent-facing entrances. You're more than welcome to add more green lights. But to at least have one there, and this would be again for the week of November sixth through November thirteenth. And I will follow this up, uh, Mark, send it to you, I'll send it to Katrina. Uh, more information about this, if that would be shared with all of the representatives there.
Okay, that sounds very good, JR.
Thank you.
Yeah. Caroline's interested, so we need a green light.
Good news, I appreciate that.
Great.
And thank you, and please, I'm happy to come back any other time, but I really wanted to come by just to. Uh, give a heads up about this and see if we could interest you in uh this expression of support.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any other questions or or comments for JR?
Where do you get green lights?
Um, right, no, right now they say Walmart, uh, Lowe's and Home Depot. Is my understanding.
Okay.
Oh, that was your question too, Nancy? Okay. And we've traded seats here, haven't we? Yes, uh, yeah, that's my understanding, though. Those are the three, those three places have the green lights. Also, I know um, when the conversations here of the county is that for those. Uh, lights where maybe they have tubes or something else, and the light fixtures are not as easily replaceable as a bulb. Um, that they're looking, considering trying to find like green film, like a green jelly that can be placed over the cover. So anything is, sounds like anything can be doable, imagination is good. Um, but if you just put, if you go to NYSEC page, NY SAC dot org, operate slash Operation Green Light. And I can put that in the chat. For everybody.
Great.
Uh, there, okay. All right, it's trying to fit my time within those few minutes, so hopefully does, doesn't everybody, but if you have any questions. Um, please feel for the follow-up with me at any time.
Great, thank you, JR.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, um. I think we've reached the end of the agenda, um, and we've had a full meeting, so um. I will, the, I, our next meeting is set for, a reminder that it's to set for December second. Um, and um. Does anybody have anything else before we adjourn? Hearing nothing, I'll wish everybody a good evening and call for adjournment, so.